We'll for forty-five minutes.
Appreciate it.
Good afternoon and welcome to today's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. It is Tuesday, June thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for roll call, Danielle and Del are absent, everyone else is here. And minutes, anybody have a chance to review the minutes?
I move to approve the May twenty-third, two thousand seventeen school board meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second it.
A motion of second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And for the agenda, we have some, some changes to note. So under financial business, where we have wire transfers for five nineteen seventeen to six eight seventeen, that should be six seven seventeen, and payment of the June thirteen bills is the correct date. And a few more changes, long-term facilities plan, Dan will be presenting that, resignations, Julie will be presenting that, and we will add one community report curriculum, and Nicole will present that. So can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion with those changes.
Second.
Motion of second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So, moving on to bond refunding.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Brown. Thank you so much for inviting me to come down to talk about possibly refinancing your, one of your bonds. So tonight, there is a resolution in front of you, and the resolution authorizes the board to move forward on refinancing the two thousand nine BABS. And the BABS, what they are, are the Build America Bonds. And they were, school districts, cities, and counties had the opportunity to use BABS back in two thousand nine and two thousand ten. And what that did is allow, like the school district, to get a thirty-five percent credit from the IRS on these bonds. Now, we are showing a savings of over seven hundred thousand dollars by refinancing these taxable bonds to tax-exempt bonds. And in front of you, the resolution, what that does is it states that the district will apply for the Minnesota Credit Enhance Program. And what that does is it allows the school district to get the bond rating of the state. And it also allows for, if there were ever a situation that the district was not able to make the payment on these, the state would make sure that they would do it in a timely manner on your behalf. So what this does is it allows the underwriters and the banks to give you a lower rate, plus you have a very good credit rating for the district. So it also lists the terms of the proposal, the good faith requirement of the underwriter or the bank, whoever's going to be purchasing it. And then it's also, it talks about how the bonds will be awarded on the day of the sale. And it'll be awarded on the TIC, which is the true interest cost. By the board approving this resolution tonight does not obligate the board to move forward if there were any reason that we would need to stop or postpone the sale due to maybe drastic changes in the interest rates. You have the right to do that, and we would recommend stopping the sale. So just because you approved this resolution tonight does not mean that you're obligated to move forward. So if there was something that caused the interest rates to go lower than what we had projected, we would consider stopping it. Okay? The next step would be after the board adopt the resolution, we would have a rating call with the superintendent and business manager, and then after that, we would be selling the bonds on July eleventh. It is competitive bids, and we will be selling at ten-thirty on that date. I would be bringing back the results, and the board at that time would approve the lowest competitive bid, and then we would grant it the approval at that time. So that's what the process is, and that is what is in front of you tonight is the resolution.
Patty, do you know when the ratings call would take place?
Yes. What we would be looking at is the week of July third.
Okay. So J- third is a Monday, the fourth is a Tuesday?
Yes. So what I said to Sue is that she was going to be consulting with you, because you are very important to be on that call, and what we would then do is set it up based off of your availability.
Okay. Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. Good.
So what would cause the interest rates to take a spike?
Very good question. If, if there's something that happens within the world, or something to cause the bond market to be disruptive for a period of time, you know, like nine eleven, that caused the bond market to go very crazy for a period of time. If for some reason, there's some type of disaster will cause some disruption in the bond market, and we have stopped sales in the past, and we have stopped one of yours quite a few years ago, when the markets weren't cooperating, and we stopped the process, waited for a few months, and then started it up again. And that, I wanted you to make sure that you understood that in case something were to happen, that you have the obligation, and we would recommend that you would pull back and stop and wait until things settle down, if that were the case.
So when the stock market took a dip a couple of weeks ago, now it's recovered.
Yep.
But when the stock market goes down, does that, do interest rates go up or go down, or does it?
When, when interest rates go up, bonds go down. When, so it's an inverse effect. So what happens, when interest rates, when they start to go up, the price of the bond goes down. When the price of the bond goes up, the interest rates are going down. So it's a, it's, it's a, it's interesting on how the bonds actually operate. But when the interest rates, the actual interest rates will go up, your bond will follow that pattern. Now, we know that interest rates are going up, but right now, the, the bond market has already adjusted for those, those increases already. So we should be pretty good.
So the seven hundred thousand dollars that will be saved by local taxpayers, that's will be the result of the lower interest rate on the new bond sale?
Correct. So the savings on that will go to your debt service is the savings, which ultimately the, your taxpayers are the ones that are going to save. Just to go one step further, Superintendent, last year, we refinanced your two thousand eight A bond, and the district saved over two million dollars on that bond. In two thousand fifteen, we refinanced your two thousand ten A, and we saved over one point five. And then, in two thousand thirteen, you refinanced your two thousand five A bonds and saved over a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Now, keep in mind, all of those savings are, were very attractive savings, and these savings all are a result of refinancing, and the taxpayers are the ones that are seeing the benefit by doing this.
And those savings occur over the life of the, the bond?
Correct. So the one that you are, what we're proposing right now to refinance is the two thousand nine A bonds. When we're talking about the seven hundred thousand dollars worth of savings, that's about fifty thousand dollars a year, per year, in savings to the debt service.
Okay, any other questions?
As I recall, when the Build America Bonds came out, they actually had a very good rate on them at the time compared to what was issued regularly because it was needed for economic stimulus, is that right?
That is correct.
So it was a pretty good deal to, to begin with, I think, and to know that we can make it even better, that I think that's, that's good news. The less debt service that we have, that's the less burden that we have on our, on our district taxpayers, so I'm glad to hear that, that we're still doing well with those.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, Dan, want to continue?
To do the resolution right now, then?
Sure.
Okay. In Appendix C, we have the certification of the six point nine two five million dollars in general obligation school funds. On page two is the resolution, the resolution authorizing issuance and sale to series twenty seventeen A, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number Twenty-seven fifty-two of Minnesota as follows, with the terms of the purpose, the terms of proposal, sale meeting, state credit enhancement program, and the district further covenants to comply with all procedures now and hereafter. So I would make a motion to approve the refinancing of those bonds to the amount of six million nine hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any final questions, discussion? Roll call vote, Dan?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Nicole?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thanks, Patty.
Thanks, Patty. Okay, Jody, you ready?
I'm ready if you are. My task tonight is to present to you a summary of the Q-COMP evaluation, and there are some handouts that are in Appendix D. The first is a report with a template from the State Department that is in detail answering several questions, and I'm really not going to go through that in detail unless you have questions on that particular information. The second, the item that you have is a summary of one of the tools that we use to evaluate the program, and it would be an evaluation team, used a state-developed rubric, and you, there were, it's a four-person team, and so when you look at the rubric, you'll see four Xs in each of the evaluation components, and that's where the people independently scored the elements of the Q-COMP plan. So there's two handouts, and that's what they are for your perusal. There were two additional methods, in addition to this evaluation team that we use to look at the Q-COMP program. One was a statistical evaluation, looking at our student achievement goal, and that goal was that our district general achievement in reading and math, based on the MCA, Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment, would go up by three percent, and that the subgroup of free and reduced lunch would go up by five percent, in balancing out by two percent, that they would break down this achievement gap, or lessen this achievement gap by two percent. And so when we looked at the preliminary data, the high school site did not make that goal, but the elementary site did, and so the incentive monies went out to the elementary site based on that preliminary information. Then you have the evaluation team report in your packet, so the third thing that really I'm going to report on is the results of a survey given to the staff. And the staff was polled in a anonymous survey, fifty-eight of them responded out of a total of a hundred and thirty-seven, so it's not quite fifty percent response rate. But what we did was ask them two sets of questions, along with some other things. And one of them was, which tool helped you to grow the most? And so we included the tools that were in Q-COMP as part of that survey. One of them was, the Q-COMP plan funds the PLC process, and so that was actually identified as one of the top professional growth areas. When we asked them, what was the single most motivation, or the single most element of your professional growth? And when they responded to that in writing, they said the PLC process was. And you can see that when we asked them whether or not this was helpful, seventy-three percent of our sta, the staff that responded said that it was very helpful or helpful in their professional growth. Then we asked them about the coaching process, because if you remember, this last year, we kind of switched around the coaching, so that we have cut, reduced the number of coaches to three, we will further reduce the number of coaches to two next year. And so this was, when, when asked, which was the most impactful, this came in as second place to the PLC process, and overall, it was rated very helpful or helpful by eighty-one percent of the teachers. Then the third component of the Q-COMP process that is paid out, or it's part of the professional development process, is Q-COMP PD money, or Q-COMP Professional Development money. And this is money that the teachers can use to pursue anything that they think will benefit their growth as teachers. Many of them use this for books, time to read the books, expenses for signing up for professional organizations and receiving those materials and research and things like that. And of all of the teachers, ninety-four percent said that this was helpful to their professional development. The second component that I'm going to report on, besides what was helpful for their own professional growth, was the changes that were made this year, and whether or not you wanted to continue the changes. So one of the things that we did was, we combined, we had, used to have two rather lengthy papers, and we combined them into one, because many of the, the individual papers were reflections that mirrored what was going on in the PLC reflection paper. So essentially, they were doing it twice, so it seemed redundant. And the teachers really liked that option, so ninety-one percent wanted to continue that. The second thing that we did was incorporated essentially a group coaching option. We were only doing individual coaching, although in this option, they, the teachers are observed individually, but they also are doing what is, in essence, an action research project. So they set a smaller goal, they implement a strategy together, and their observation or their coaching rounds are on this strategy implementation process, then they measure the student gains based on the post-assessment. And so we just asked them, do you want to continue this option? And eighty-two percent said yes. We asked them about continuing the Q-COMP money, and seventy-five of percent of them said yes. The second big pie is they didn't have an opinion, so. This was sharing the results of the survey. Now, do you have any questions for me, based on the Q-COMP information? Yes?
Jody, how much PD, how much, how much money was available per person?
Total? About eight hundred fifty, no, one thousand eight hundred fifty.
Per teacher?
Per teacher.
And they could use this for professional development?
No.
No.
That's their total payout. For professional development was three hundred fifty, sorry, I misunderstood your question.
I'm sorry, okay. And then, second question is, how big were the group coaching? Was there a range, like three or five, or?
I believe the smallest was two, and the largest was ten.
Really?
And many of them selected a group in their PLC, so they studied something together during this coaching round, but some of the, the PLC groups split into two groups, but most of them were done in the teacher's PLC process.
Any distinction between elementary versus secondary?
In terms of?
Anything? In terms of?
Very, very general question.
Well, in terms of, maybe in terms of the data, you didn't disaggregate this by elementary?
We did, but I sent that off to the principals, because this survey was, also had the World's Best Workforce and SDCC and some of the other professional development tools in it as well, so they disaggregated it based on their site.
Okay.
But overall, I would say that it's, I don't know, this is kind of just off the top of my head, but overall, it seemed that the group coaching process worked better at the elementary setting, because they had similar curriculum and similar implementation goals. It was harder to find a strategy that moved from seventh to twelfth grade in a subject matter area for high school teachers to embrace that process. So I would say that it was more impactful at the elementary.
And then a question about results, the elementary said met their district goal in both math and reading?
Yes, in both math and reading, on the MCA data. Now, I'm going to do a disclaimer here, because what happens at the state is that our preliminary data may not be what our ending data is, because students that move into our district after October first would have their test score in our preliminary data, but overall, would be shifted to another Minnesota district, because in that district, they were there before October first. So we've got some shifting of state data that will happen, and I don't even know who some of those students are, so I can't take them out of our pool. So the numbers aren't going to be exactly the same because of how the state divvies out this data based on the October first deadline for where a student resides.
And did you see more growth in reading or math?
It was very similar.
Okay.
I didn't, I don't think we have.
And we met the five percent free and reduced lunch?
Yes, at the elementary site.
Wow, that's great.
So we shrunk the achievement gap by two percent at the elementary site, which was our district goal. Any further questions?
Did the survey have any opportunity for the, for the teachers to comment?
Yes.
Any comments regarding, you know, the change in the coaching model?
Some teachers would prefer the other, going the other way, especially those who were coaches. It was an incentive for them financially to do the coaching. And then, at the end of next year, the school board had said they would look at it again, so I really don't know what they're going to say.
Okay.
There were some other open-ended questions about suggestions for improving the system, and we, the biggest feedback that we got was, there seemed to be a lot of mix-up on makeup days for snow days, makeup time in that area, flex PD and Q-COMP PD. So what we are going to do to try and navigate all of that is have one form within their Q-COMP folder with directions for each of these different entities. Q-COMP only controls one of them, but they're very similar in how the teachers need to monitor that information, so it's kind of confusing. We're going to try and simplify it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Superintendent's report.
Well, we have no attendance enrollment data tonight, of course, but if you look at your school calendar, it's going to be very short. The, we've printed on there that Del and Rufus and I were going to meet sometime, and I'll be gone for a few days during that time, but Southern Plains has their next board meeting on June twenty-sixth. And by the way, just for the board's information, I did send Dr. Middlestad a letter two days ago, requesting that in the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year that we take over the Paris. And so that was done. I just want to point out, on Friday, June thirtieth, we have new teacher orientation going on, and that will be held in the Elementary Media Center. And in the morning, if any of the board members are around, it's a great time to stop and meet the eleven new faculty members that we have coming in.
What's the date on that?
It's a Friday, June thirtieth. And in the afternoon, these teachers will be taking a boat ride, so we can teach them all about Fairmont from the water view. And then, just for the board's information, June fifteenth to June twenty-ninth, I'm going to take a vacation. Robin and I are going to the state of Virginia to do some historical touring, and, but I'll be back on June thirtieth for the new teacher orientation meeting, then I'll be back the whole, starting in July, full-time. So, take my vacation and get it done.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Financial business, Sue?
Tonight on the agenda, we have the May two thousand seventeen Treasurers Report, the wire transfers from May nineteenth to June seventh, and the payment of the June thirteenth bills. So in your packet, you would have had the May two thousand seventeen Treasurers Report. You can see listed, we have all of the funds, and then the different accounts within the funds, and then the end-of-the-month cash balance. And then on the flip side, you have the expenditure report for May and the wires and transfers, but then Judy handed you a revised sheet, so hopefully everyone has the revised sheet. So then on the top, we'll look at the expenditure report for May, we have the funds along the left side, and then we have the revised budget. Now, this revised budget is actually the budget that's on the agenda next, so the dollar amounts have changed since the last time you saw this. So our total budget, that twenty-five million, one hundred forty-nine thousand. Monthly expenditures in May were one point eight million, and year-to-date, nineteen point seven million. So that shows us year-to-date, overall, in all funds, at seventy-eight percent, and in the general fund, seventy-five percent. And that does, while that seems like, wow, we're already in June, we're almost finished with the year, with our teacher pay, they're paid out over twelve months, and their June, July, and August pay is actually for the sixteen-seventeen school year. So to, as of May, they've received seventy-five percent of their pay, so that percent is appropriate. And then in the middle part, we have the wires and transfers from May nineteenth to June seventh. There was a variety of them there. We had our revenue share from payments through Commerce Bank, then our net payroll is the next one, our net payroll for May. The next couple are for associated with payroll. Then we had money coming in for ideas payment. We receive ideas money twice a month, on the fifteenth and the thirtieth. And then some additional dollars came in for federal funds and food service, and then we have some additional payroll things, our P-card payment, and we'll look at that register here in a moment, and then our health insurance payment of a hundred and forty-two thousand. Then on the bottom, our payroll dispersments for the month of May is one point one million. Any questions so far? Can move to the register dated today. Just a few checks to bring to your attention. Check number fifty-nine eight seventy-five made out to ACT. This is the ACT, or the pre-ACT for tenth graders. That was new this year during the sixteen-seventeen school year. The tenth graders took that test the same day the juniors took the ACT test, and the tenth graders are taking this pre-ACT instead of the Explore and Plan test that they previously took. Check number fifty-nine eight forty-eight made out to Mr. Blanc. This is for State Track meal money. We had twenty athletes and five coaches go to the State Track meet last weekend. And check number fifty-nine eight seventy-four made out to Life Track Services. This is for our senior survey. So we surveyed all of our graduating seniors, and the questions were designed by the districts, by the district, and then those students are tracked for the next five years through that survey. And then the last one to bring to your attention, check number fifty-nine eight seventy-seven made out to Martin County West. This is our settle-up payment for the gymnastics that we share with Martin County West. Our total costs were thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars, and we ended up owing Martin County West ten thousand five hundred twenty dollars, because they pay for some things, and we pay for some things, and we settle up then in the spring. Any questions on that register? Go through, just have one on the P-card register that Judy would have handed you tonight. There's a payment to the Minnesota DNR, and right, right below that, the Minnesota Historical Society. Those are both being paid for with student activity dollars, and this was for field trips for elementary students. That's all I have for you on that, and Julie and I did review everything prior to the board meeting.
Any questions? If not, I would.
If not, I would propose a motion to approve the May 2017 Treasurers Report, wire transfers from May 19th, 2017 to June 7th, 2017, and payment of the June 13th, 2017 bills.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
The next thing we have is the 2016-2017 revised budget. So, you should have Appendix A in front of you. Each year, we do review the budget three times. In June prior to the start of the school year, we have the preliminary budget. And then, in the fall, when all staff is in place for the school year and after employee negotiations, we have an adopted budget. We did that in November. And then, again, this time of year, spring, summer, we have a revised budget. And as I mentioned, that is Appendix A, is the 16-17 revised budget. In reviewing this revised budget, I'll compare it with the adopted budget that the board approved on November 15th. And the general fund changes have been made to revenues and expenditure budgets. The bottom line is we're projected to end the year with about 32,000 more in the general fund unassigned fund balance area. On the expenditure side, I did increase budgets for the Southern Plains bill. And then, the budgets for curriculum and technology were also increased based on plans for, we work on like a five-year plan with those. On the revenue side, I did some changes with budgets, mainly increases with our title grants. There was a little bit more available to us. Interest earnings are increasing. Our special education revenue will increase a little bit as our expenses increase. They're doing a change with Southern Plains. And then, we received more in MA payments than we originally had budgeted. I also changed the budget for some one-time revenue for the 16-17 school year. Previously, with our Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and working with Co-op in a pool, we had a separate bank account where those payments would run through. And now, the South Central Service Co-op is handling that differently. So, the dollars that were in that account came to us and I needed to put into smart finance, just in a different cash account, so it looks like additional revenue. But it's just a one-time thing, and it's just moving it from one account to another account. Another change in the general fund is the committed for masonry. At a board meeting, I believe in April, the board approved to use those funds for a security project, some assessments, and then also two other items that now we are able to use long-term facilities maintenance dollars for instead. So, now, just the heading just says formally committed for the masonry project. And those dollars will actually be spent in the following school year, the 17-18. Overall, we are projecting to end the year with 3.2 million in the unassigned fund balance area. This is right at two months of expenditures. Our total general fund revenues are 18.6 million. 14.9% of that is local dollars, 8.2 are federal dollars, and the balance of 82.3 are coming from the state. The total general fund expenditures are 19,351,000, and that does exceed revenues in the amount of 703,000. The majority of that is in areas that we had assigned dollars, like in the areas of staff development, literacy, vocational, and QCOM. And then, in the largest area is in technology and curriculum, where we're spending down about 444,000 of that assigned fund balance. Okay, I'll move to food service. The rest of the budgets changes very, just not really very much at all. The food service, just a slight change there, projecting to end the year with increasing the fund balance by about 27,000. CER showing a few changes, looking to end the year with CER and the unassigned at about 34,000, about 64,000 in ECFE, about 14,000 in adult basic education, and school readiness at about 40,000. And the school readiness fund balance is going back about 12,000, and that's because of a planned curriculum purchase. Moving to the capital fund, there were some changes made there that stemmed from a project to upgrade our network equipment, improving our Wi-Fi and moving to the most current switches. This will improve our network and address our growing demands on our network. This change affected both the revenues and the expenditures. Obviously, the expenditure is the cost of the project. But on the revenue side, the project was eligible for an E-rate discount, so we did receive about 70% of the cost back. And so, that's on the revenue side. Another big change in, in the capital is for some assessments that will be paid in the 18-19 school year versus the, excuse me, in the 17-18 versus the 16-17 school year. You may notice that the long-term facilities maintenance area has a negative fund balance that is allowed. We have levy authority that is stepping up for three years, and legislation allows us to spend into the negative as long as we're able to cash flow that. And so, we'll actually be in the negative for a couple of years, and then we'll catch up with the revenue. Debt service, just very slight changes to the budget from the adopted budget. And then, in trust and agencies, this is where we have the Hunt Fund and the Enrichment Fund, just some slight changes there. And then, in student activity, there were some changes to reflect current activity. Total revenues in all funds, 24,204,000. Expenditures, 25,149,000, a difference of 945,000. Again, 700,000 of that is spending down assigned fund balances in the general fund, and the majority of the rest of it is in the capital fund in the long-term facilities area. I did review this with the Operations Committee at their meeting last week on June 7th, and they do recommend approval. Do you have any questions?
Makes sense.
I'm going to make a comment about the $700,000. It's very important that, when you look at this budget, it looks like we're deficit spending, but remember that we set aside a few million dollars in the assigned budget a few years ago, and we kept building up that assigned budget because we want to make sure that over the next four to five years, continually, we'll have money for curriculum, money for technology, money for staff development, and those, and literacy. And so, it's really, we are spending more money than we're currently taking in because we're taking this money out of our savings account, basically. That's the way I like to explain it to people. So, we're ending the year pretty good. And the real neat thing is that we're ending the year with 3.3,273,000 of unassigned fund balance, which is our two-month goal.
Right, that's our projected. We'll know the final amount, October, November, when the audit is finished.
So, do you need a motion to approve this?
Yes. Let me see. Yeah, there is a separate motion.
Make a motion to approve the revised 2016-17 budget as offered in Appendix A.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Okay, now, we'll move to the 17-18 preliminary budget, and that is Appendix B. So, prior to the start of any school year, a school board must approve a preliminary budget, and that's the document you have before you. Work did begin on this preliminary budget in the spring. We talked about projections and assumptions regarding revenues, enrollment, the anticipated change in the formula allowance with legislation. Also, talked about expenditures for employee contracts and staffing, utilities, insurance, transportation. Try to look at everything with kind of an overview. And this year, we did have several retirements and resignations, and administration worked to come up with a plan that would be with a goal of cost-neutral to best meet the needs of our students and our district. So, then, this 17-18 preliminary budget document begins with the estimated fund balance, which is the estimated of where we believe we'll end the 16-17 school year. The beginning fund balance and the general fund in all areas is 5.8 million with revenues of 18.6 million, expenditures 19.3 million, and looking to end the year about 4.8 million in all of the fund balances. And in the unassigned area, just under 3 million, so just shy of our two months of operating expense. The projected beginning-of-the-year fund balances will change depending upon how we end the current school year. The audit will be with switching companies. Our actual onsite audit will be in October instead of late August and early September, so we won't really have final numbers till more like October or November. With this preliminary budget, we did reduce our, the student serve slightly. We're using 1,665 in our projection, and previously, we'd been using 1,677. So, we'll look at that again in the fall once school gets started and we do that, that next budget. On the revenue side, I did increase the formula allowance by 2% as per legislation. On the expenditure side, I increased budgets for wages and benefits, estimated amounts for unsettled contracts, increases to Southern Plains for special education costs, 2% increase for contract travel to Minnesota Motor Bus. Utility budgets look like they would be fine and not need to change. The telephone budget is being increased by about $10,000. The reason for that is telephone, whether it be Frontier or cell phones, previously has been E-rated. So, a few years back, it was E-rated at 70%, you know, for a few years in a row. And then, that has been stepping down. So, then, it became a 50% reduction in costs, and then 30%. Now, we're only at 10%. And then, the E-rate will go away for all telephone costs. And then, the technology and curriculum budgets were changed based on the plans approved with administration. And then, the revenue budgets did change a little bit. For the hockey and soccer agreements, we'll no longer be receiving those reimbursements. And this fall, I will continue to work on the budgets when, after school gets started, and we have our staffing, and we'll have discussions. Joe and I will discuss which, how many students we should use for that next budget. We'll have our final staffing in place, and hopefully, we'll have all employee contracts settled. So, that's the general fund. Then, moving to food service fund, this is preliminary. I did this budget based on the proposal by Chartwell's when we went out for proposals for a new food service management company. Their proposal was increase in the fund balance by about 61,000. So, that's what that, this budget looks like. They had worked in their proposal, anticipated state and federal reimbursement changes, staffing changes, lunch price increase of 5 cents, and food cost changes. In community service, the preliminary budget is a lot like the 16-17 revised budget with some assumptions for wages and benefits. And I'll continue to work with Ronnie and Michelle on those budgets in the fall. In operating capital, this is for actual health and safety and deferred maintenance projects. That's now called the long-term facility maintenance projects, those that are scheduled and are anticipated capital expenditure and technology projects for the 17-18 school year. The debt service is based on actual scheduled payments and levy dollars. Trust and agency is about like the revised budget with just a couple of changes, and student activity is just a few changes. Total revenues for the preliminary budget for all funds, 24,158,000. Expenditures, 25,334,000. As I mentioned, this is preliminary. It's just kind of a, seems to be more of an overview, and then, the next budget in November is much more detailed. We did look, review this with Operations Committee on June 7th, and they do recommend approval. Do you have any questions?
Hey, Sue, back to food service. Do we have any update on the Chartwell's new food service director?
No. I've asked a few times, and I talked, I emailed with Katie yesterday, and she does not have a replacement at this time.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned the budgeting for fewer students. From what I understand, it appears that we're going to, at least at this point, have, for a new kindergarten class, actually, a pretty small class anticipated coming in?
That's right. We usually, about this time of year, Dan, we usually take a look at the number of students that have already registered, and right now, we have a little more than 80. And then, traditionally, though, we always pick up 20 students in July and August. So, we're estimating that we'll have about 100 students in kindergarten, so that'll be five sections of 20. But if Mrs. Daniel continues her pilot program of 15 students, then some of those classes will maybe be 21. And so, we're estimating that there may be 100. The change, I think, is that there's a private kindergarten school that's being started by one of the churches nearby the high school. And I understand there's 24 students enrolled in that program. So, we're looking at five sections of kindergarten rather than six. Okay. So, who want to?
Yep. I move to approve the preliminary 2017-18 budget as presented.
Second it.
Okay, motion and a second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Welcome back, Sue.
Thank you.
We missed you.
Thanks.
Okay, go to calendar.
Okay. Okay, calendar, yep.
Okay. Every year, we need to approve a revised calendar, which reflects any snow days or schedule changes that were implemented throughout the year. And this year, we had two snow days that were specifically January 25th and February 24th. Therefore, the revised calendar as presented in Appendix C is what we'll be approving tonight. Our district has always tried to build a cushion of, I believe the state goes by minutes or hours now. And so, for what students must be in class, that's why in the past few years, as far as I can remember, we've not had to make up snow days for students because we have enough of a cushion that we've not had to do that. However, the staff is contractually obligated to be here for 184 days, and therefore, when we have snow days, they still make up those days to meet that contractual obligation. So, having said that, I move to approve the revised 2016-17 school calendar as presented in Appendix C1.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any questions, discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. QCOM report, Julie?
Yes, we heard a report this evening from the QCOM by Jody Christensen. And so, you have that in your packet as Appendix D. I would make a motion to approve the 2016-17 final QCOM report and recommended changes to the 2017-18 QCOM plan.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Long-term facilities, Dan?
Yeah, we spoke about this with Tyler Garrison, came to our operations meeting when we had that here last week, and talked about a little bit of the adjustments. And we also talked with Sue about some of the budgeting things. It's a very complicated process as far as the way that they compute the money at the state. But it is our job to have a list of projects ready to go here for the next 10 years. And we talked about which projects are being looked at, talked about the projections for the revenue that'll be coming in. That amount will be steadily increasing, as Sue mentioned in her talk about the budget, and then, what we anticipate to have in expenditures over that 10 years. So, the result of that is in the packet as Appendix E, I believe. And I would make a motion to approve the document relating to long-term facilities maintenance plan.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any questions for Dan? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Policy 805, Nicole?
Yep, Policy 805 is a policy regarding waste reduction and recycling, and it's in Appendix G1, and all those changes were recommended by MSBA or are in accordance with state statute. I therefore move to approve the changes to Policy 8, number 805, Waste Reduction and Recycling as presented in Appendix G1.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions?
So, the, the changes include, I see something, is it like composting that they're looking at? Or one of the changes to the food service part? Recyclable materials, it was Section 3G, I think. Or am I misreading what they're talking about?
So, what's your question?
Oh, I just was wondering, is that, are we going to have to make any changes in the, in the food service area when it talks about sole source food waste streams managed through biodegradable processes?
That's sole, S-O-L-E, not S-O-U-L, right?
Yeah.
Sole source.
It says recycling or composting. So, I don't know that we have to compost.
Okay.
Because it doesn't say "and." And this, the food services, Chartwell's, should be updated on this. And I'm not familiar with exactly what we're doing now. I think there's recycle, are there recycling? I think there's recycle, are there recycling for plastic bottles and that, bins?
We do cans, plastic. And at the elementary, we recycle the milk cartons.
So we won't have to start a compost pile out by this, by the back of the school?
No, but if our garbage is going through Truman, isn't it composted through there?
That's true.
You know, I mean, that's, isn't, I don't know who's our garbage hauler, but I mean, that's where a lot of the Martin County garbage has gone through. And so that would cover that as a composting.
And the main changes here too, Dan, had to do with, page six and seven, had to do with the printing materials, the printing cartridges, and the type of paper that's used to go through the copy machines. Those are some recommended changes by the state. Trying to get more ecologically friendly.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Instructional sharing agreement.
Yes. We are entering into an instructional sharing agreement with Grenada Huntley East Chain following the resignation of our industrial arts instructor, construction trades teacher, Terry Carlson. We sought for candidates and no suitable candidates applied and then learned that Grenada Huntley East Chain was interviewing for a part-time or 50 percent construction trades teacher. And so we're kind of a first time that I can remember, we're sharing a instructor with a neighboring district, kind of working together. And with that, we've been able to offer this candidate a full-time contract and have him serve, serve both Grenada Huntley East Chain and Fairmont. Pleasantly so, Rick Hotzler has accepted this shared position and will serve each district 50 percent. He'll be employed 100 percent by Grenada Huntley East Chain. And our district will reimburse them for half the cost. And then that is the appendix H, that is the sharing agreement that we have, so. And now does that go as, as his employment then? Right? I mean, I just want to make sure, I'll, I'll give him a little background on him as well. He retired in 2016 from 36 years of teaching industrial technology at United South Central High School. He holds an industrial arts degree from Mankato State University. And during his time at USC, Rick taught a variety of classes, including construction methods, civil engineering, principles of engineering, engineering design, small gas engines, woodworking and metal woodworking, or metalworking, sorry. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve sharing, or entering into an agreement with Grenada Huntley East Chain for 50 percent instructional sharing of industrial technology instructor, Rick Hotzler.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions?
The other comment is Rick's Principal Ness and Principal Fletcher from Grenada have been working together. I think he's going to be working in our district three mornings in the fall and then two in the spring. And then do a yin yang with Grenada. And at Fairmont, he'll be teaching one, he's going to actually be taking over the small engines class. And that's kind of his, one of his areas of expertise. And then Mr. Bodine will be doing an additional welding class that Terry Carlson did last year because we have so many students taking welding in the welding academy. And then he'll be doing the construction trades program, the four classes of Woods. And then remember that Brad Johnson will be doing the five sections of STEM 8. So they'll be using that lab, you know, in a collaborative manner. And I'm kind of excited about this. It's always nice, I know Julie, you've talked a long time about making sure that our district, being the larger district in the county, that we have a lot to offer kids. And anything we can do to help our regional schools is in the best interest of everybody.
Of everybody, exactly. And I just want to say, commending those that, you know, saw the foresight to look into this and bring it to reality that we can do this and that we can work together. Small town, I mean, you know, we're far from the, the cities and, you know, we're, we have to be kind of original and kind of thinking out of the box sometimes to fill our staffing needs, especially in these days of short teachers, teacher shortage. So, you know, like I said, I just, I really think that's wonderful and I think it, it helps us both.
And I did, I personally met with Rick Hotzler for a few hours, actually, I think a half a day. I took him through the entire high school. We went around and visited other classes. And once again, as many of our new teachers, even though he's a veteran, he commented on two things that always surprises me when I hear the comments because I know what a good system we have. But he was just intrigued at how clean our high school is. And he was impressed that all of our kids were in class, that they weren't in the hallways. And I said, well, that's the type of school that we run. And that's very important because Mr. Hotzler, his reputation is that he's a person of very, very high expectations. And he likes to run a very clean and a very safe shop. So it sounds like he's a good halftime replacement for Mr. Carlson. Okay?
Okay. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Resignations, Julie?
Yes. First, we have Holly Christian has tendered her letter resignation effective June 8th, 2017. During Holly's nine-year tenure, she served as a business teacher and a technology integration specialist. And so with that, I will approve the, make a motion to approve the resignation of Holly Christian as a business instructor effective June 8th, 2017.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And then the second resignation, Kathy Cluver, Title 1Aid, has resigned her position effective June 2nd, 2017. Kathy had been employed with the district for two years. So I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Kathy Cluver as a Title 1Aid effective June 2nd, 2017.
Second.
A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And moving to employment?
Yes, me again. So we had an opening yet for a math instructor for the 201718 school year. And so interviews were held and Principal Ness is recommending that Ashley Skevel be hired as a math teacher. She holds a BS degree in mathematics education from Iowa Wesleyan College. She served the past three years as a math teacher at North Union High School in Armstrong. So I would make a motion to approve the employment of Ashley Skevel as a math teacher at a salary of BA Step 4 effective June 30th, 2017.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 You want a question?
I was gonna, I was gonna make a comment. Ashley also is going to be one of our new assistant girls varsity basketball coaches.
Oh, good.
And she played college ball in Iowa.
Good, wonderful.
We welcome her to our faculty and staff.
Very much so.
Did you want to vote?
Yeah, I think we did already.
Did you vote?
Yeah.
Sorry, I interrupted.
Well, it's good to know. It's good to know, to have, you know, more coaching staff and new individuals that are wanting to be involved in our coaching staff.
Right, and she actually interviewed with Sarah Junkameyer, our new head basketball coach. And I will tell you, she was very excited about that. And that was kind of the tiebreaker to get her to relocate from Iowa into Minnesota is that not only did she want to teach here, but she really wanted to coach girls basketball.
Good.
And so she's going to be a great addition to our team.
Before we move to board committee reports, we have a celebration. I see we have Cassandra Lopez in the audience. She'll be attending Harvard summer program for high school students. Maybe she can share a little bit about that program with us?
Well, I'm Cassandra Lopez. I am currently a rising junior for Fairmont High School. I transferred in at the end of seventh grade looking for a more rigorous curriculum and I've definitely found it here. I've been attending college since I was 15 and currently I'm attending Minnesota West Community and Technical College. And this summer, I will also be attending Harvard University. So this summer, I will be taking a seven-week course, but I will be there for more like eight weeks, moving in, moving out. I will be taking neurobiology with a senior lecture, which I am very excited about, and a writing and literature course with another senior lecturer. So I'll be getting the most out of these classes. I actually got my dorm assignment today, so I will be staying in Kennedy Hall, which is the best dorm on campus. So, I mean, I have to say that. Now I can. I am very excited about this experience. We, not only on campus, they want us to learn about Harvard, they want to, us to keep our options open for other Ivy Leagues. So they will be taking us on trips to Yale, Stanford, and the surrounding colleges that are Ivies. So that's really exciting. They are very productive and I'm looking forward to this experience, so.
Cassandra, how many students from around the country are able to participate in this program?
Well, last year, there were 64 countries that students were selected from. This is a global program. So while I was not only competing against American students, I was competing against students from around the world. Regularly, on a typical scale, they accept 1,200 secondary school students. That varies, I mean, by tens, kind of changes with each year. But about 400 of those are students coming from other colleges that are just transferring in for the summer to experience classes that they can't get at their own university. And then another 200 or so are online students. Because you can't, I had the option of taking this online, but I really want the full experience and who doesn't want to go to Boston for two and a half months? So roughly, there'll be about 6, 700 of us on campus. And we will be staying in the freshman dorms. There is the Harvard Yard, which is the main center frame of where Harvard is, big thing it's known for. And I was actually being, I'm actually lucky enough to staying in Kennedy, which is right there in Harvard Yard. Not all the dorms are there, but there's about four or five that are, so.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other questions? Well, thanks for sharing.
Yes, thank you.
Have a great time.
Okay, board committee reports. Staff welfare, Julie, once again?
Yes. Okay, staff welfare, we met Wednesday, May 24th. And Superintendent Brown already mentioned this, that he'd sent a notice to Dr. Middlestead, but it was discussed. And with the 2018, 2019 school year, the special educational paraprofessionals will then become Fairmont School District or the Fairmont Educational Area employees. So in the past, they have been hired by Southern Plains and then they worked in our, our buildings. But now Fairmont will be taking that over. And then we also discussed the strategic plan draft, talked about that. Also got a teacher staffing update. And at that time, we, I think we were still just looking, we were discussing, I know, the halftime position with Grenada Huntley East Chain. And then we also were aware of a full-time math teacher that was available. We talked about technology integration specialist, where there was just discussion on the role and the success of the technology integration specialist role. And we have put it, a list, wanted to know what the list of projects were. And at this time, we are still waiting on that. We talked about the district administration configuration, some different possibilities of how administration could be done. And I think that is in the works right now as well. We also discussed criteria for the varsity letters. The main one we talked about was, you know, just the qualifications or what was needed for each board to have it. But then we also discussed the volunteer varsity letter as well, so. Okay?
Okay. Any questions? Moving to operations, Dan?
When we met on the 7th, we discussed with Sue, she went through the, the final budget for this year and the preliminary budget that we looked at in our meeting tonight. And with the director of building and grounds, he went through the 10-year long-term facilities maintenance and we looked at, you know, there's going to be changes. There's already been a couple of, of changes as far as working on different parts of the roof, little higher priority on some projects versus others. And so we put that together and approved that. And there was one other thing and I can't remember. Because it wasn't talked about at the meeting here tonight, I don't think.
I can't remember either.
Has not have been too important.
Well, it was a brief, it was brief, so.
Well, you talked about the strategic plan, I think, too, didn't you? I mean, you discussed that as well, I know.
For the 10-year plan.
Well, I know the 10-year plan, the best thing with that is, like Dan said too, we can change those, you know, those projects around and, and put things as, you know, things, if they become as more needful, we can move them up on the list that need to be done. I mean, it's just great. And it's a way we can maybe avoid having all the repairs that we went through here several years ago. We can put things on this project and, and work on things as they come. So it's wonderful. The state has given us that opportunity to use that.
That has been one of the, in my opinion, one of the best things that the governor has done is to, you know, prod the legislature too, to get that so we don't have to have a whole bunch of things come up wrong and then go out for a big election and a big project. We can take care of these things as we needed, piece by piece, without having to do a gigantic roofing project all in one summer, so.
You mentioned the strategic plan, Dan. There is a template here that I think we distributed tonight to board members. The, the strategic plan that I sent out electronically, that's the skeleton of the plan, but do you have a copy of this?
I have two, if somebody needs one.
Well, yeah, I think there, we have, I think all the pages are the same. But it's just a sample of what we need to do next. And over the summer, we will be, administratively, we will be starting to fill this in because this is really the action plan in terms of what specific tasks are we planning to do in the next couple of years? Who's responsible for it? What resources do we need? How are we going to communicate that to the public? And what's the timeline for the date of completion? And speaking of communication, we talked last night at the curriculum committee and Judy did post, we have a new item on the website. So if people go to the website and go under administration, they can see any upcoming school board meetings.
Committee meetings.
Or any board meetings. In fact, tonight's board meetings is already posted on that. And we'll be posting all of our meetings in the future on Facebook also. One of, we had two students that came last night to our curriculum committee and someone asked, you know, how'd you hear about this? And they heard about it because they bumped into me in a restaurant. Robin and I were over in Rochester eating dinner one night and they happened to be over there and they stopped and they said, hey, you should probably come to this curriculum meeting. There's probably a better way to do that. So we thought by posting it on the website and the Facebook, that would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Speaking of, do you want me to go on to mine?
Please, please.
Curriculum policy, we met last night from about 4:30 to 5:30 and discussed the English Language Arts curriculum for 11th and 12th grade, most specifically with regards to the Honors 11 and the Honors College in the School 12th grade. And to note, for the Honors Language Arts 11 class, they'll be using the framework of the Pearson or Perspectives curriculum in the upcoming year, but they're looking to add more college prep literature and novels. And they are planning on forming an advisory committee to help decide what those might, those books, novels, literature, what that, they might exactly be. So if you're interested in that, you can contact Superintendent Judy? Yeah, contact Judy. And we'll, we'll let you know when, when those meetings will take place to, to look, look at that more in depth. Also, it's exciting, in the 12th grade, they are, previously, we've had one year of College in the School English, I think it was called, it was more of a literature class. And it counted for three credits, three college credits through Minnesota West. It's being proposed, and I believe it is be, it will be, that there will be one semester of composition, excuse me, that will be worth three credits through Minnesota West and then another semester of literature that will be worth three credits through Minnesota West. So students can take, if they take, choose to, they can take their senior year two College in the School classes and get a total of six credits. Or they can choose to take one College in the School course and get three credits and then take a speech class or the regular Pearson English class. We're trying to give our students more flexibility and to, and trust that our students and their parents recognize what their needs are as, as students in our school. And it's, it's exciting, it's fun, and we look forward to that. There will be a letter going out or some sort of notification going out to all seniors who registered for the College in the School class next year because it is different than what it was when they, when they originally registered. We want them all to be informed about that change and so they can make an informed decision if they want to continue with that, with that course.
And I just want to introduce, we have a guest in the audience tonight. We have a teacher from Byron and he's a social studies teacher and also very involved in the football program over there. I'm not recruiting him to teach here, but John, John Wayne Austenson is a potential candidate for Congress. He's thinking about running for Congress. The Tim Walz, you know, currently has that congressional seat and he's visiting the Fairmont area tonight and I invited him to the school board meetings.
to the school board meeting, so he can see what a great school board we are, and we are. And we only have four of the six members here, and the other two are very good also, but we have a very good school board, very good district, and if you are elected to Congress, John, remember us, especially, especially as it relates to Perkins funding for the vocational program. That's my, that's my advocacy for the night.
My wife's a school board member, she's on her third term in the Dover Yost School.
Very good. Welcome.
Yep.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I just wanted to say, congratulations to all the graduates of two thousand seventeen, and congratulations to all the very successful activities that we had this spring, sports and fine arts. Very, very wonderful finish to the year here, I think.
Yeah, we, we sent a big squad to, we had twenty to state track, and a handful to golf.
Our boys tennis won the division title, and our softball team had the, set the record for most wins in a season, so, was very good with that, and we had some fantastic fine arts presentations as we went to the end of the year, too, so, great job.
Thanks for bringing that up. Okay, now I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, board. Thank you, Joe.